Good evening. Welcome to the June twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two La Mirada City Council Regular Meeting. Uh, let's see. Can you please stand and join me for the invocation by Pastor Ralph Miley, who I saw here earlier, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by VFW Post nine-one-four-eight?
Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege, the privilege to serve. We have Christ as our example, for the Son of Man did not come to be served, but to serve. We thank you for these men that serve you. They serve this community. They serve the people of La Mirada, because it was by your divine hand that you've placed these servants to be stewards over the authority in which you have established, that you have graciously given them wisdom and guidance. These men are your servants and your people who you redeemed by the great power and by your strong hand. Give them wisdom and knowledge of understanding. We pray for your grace and mercy, Father, to fill this room. We ask that your Holy Spirit guide them in every decision that they make. We ask for your peace to guard our hearts and to guard our minds, and we ask for your blessings. We thank you for your word that says, "The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace." Thank you, most blessed Redeemer, for it is in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior we pray, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please face the flag. Hand over your heart, those in uniform. Attention. Present arms. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have the roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Sarega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Otero.
Here.
Before we get to the appearances, presentations, and proclamations, uh, we have Zurich Lewis here today, uh, Sarido's trustees. We also have Chris Flanser, former school board member. And I don't see anybody else. If you see anybody else, if I don't see you, just pretend I called you. It's good enough. Uh, first, we have five-point-one, introduction of LA County Sheriff's Captain Christopher Johnson. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's the city's practice to introduce new city staff and contract employees that have become part of the city team. This evening, we are introducing Captain Christopher Johnson, who has been selected as the new captain of Norwalk Sheriff's Station. I'd like to invite Captain Johnson to the front of the room. With twenty-seven years of experience as a deputy sheriff, Captain Johnson has worked various patrol investigative and special assignments at Lennox Station, Transit Services Bureau, Compton Station, Norwalk Station, and Marina Del Rey Station. Captain Johnson was promoted to sergeant in two thousand nine and then lieutenant in two thousand thirteen. He served as captain of the Marina Del Rey Station beginning in January of two thousand twenty-one. Captain Johnson obtained an associate of science degree and will graduate with a bachelor of arts degree in criminal justice next year. It is recommended this council welcome Captain Johnson and present him with two tickets to the La Mirada Theater for the Performing Arts. Welcome, Chris.
Well, let's see. I was on the interview board. I can tell you, we didn't pick him because of his looks, because we already have the city manager, George Boynton, with a good looks. We didn't pick him for his hair, because we have Steve DeRusse here. He's got the perfect hair. But we did pick him because he was that good. You know, it was his passion, his knowledge, and his experience. He just stood out among all the candidates. We had great candidates, but he was the best one. So, uh, on behalf of the city of La Mirada, Chris, I just wanted to say that I did talk to Desiree after they told me you, you got the job. They made the announcement, and she said, "I hope he would take me out to dinner and the theater." So, we're gonna honor half of it. So, these are two tickets to the theater, but you're gonna have to pay for dinner. You want to say anything?
Sure. Uh, I'm very honored to take this job. Uh, I grew up in the city of Norwalk, lived there for twenty-five years, and then I made the big giant move to La Mirada, right down the street, right? Uh, so I lived here for the past twenty-two years. I still live here. So I think who better to take care of our community than someone that lives in the community? I see things on a regular basis while I'm working or not working that actually I want to address, so now I have that perfect opportunity. Uh, thank the city for accepting me, and I look forward to meeting a lot of you guys out in the community. Um, I like going to the community events, so you'll, guaranteed you'll see me out there if you're there. So, uh, again, thank you. I appreciate it.
We really did have some great candidates, but when, when, uh, Chris came up and he started talking about law enforcement, you know, he was, he was a hands-down choice. He was really that good, so don't disappoint us, Chris. This is Desiree, you got any tents? No? Okay. Well, tell her you got two tickets, so don't tell her you got two tickets. Yeah. Five-point-two, recognition of Gail Pierce for her dedicated service to the community. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gail Pierce was first appointed to the city's Historical Preservation Advisory Council during its inception in March of two thousand six. After sixteen years serving the advisory council, she resigned from H-PAC in April. This evening, we are recognizing Gail for her service to the community and her contributions to H-PAC. In August nineteen sixty-four, Gail moved to La Mirada from the city of Downey with her late husband, Thomas, and their four children, Matthew, Karen, Mark, and Nancy. Gail enjoyed family life and was a doting mother to her children who all attended schools in La Mirada. She was a Bluebird leader, an assistant Cub Scout leader, and a member of the PTA. She graduated from Cal State Fullerton, where she earned her Bachelor of Science in Human Services with concentration in Gerontology. Gail worked as a nursing home administrator for twenty years and as a substitute teacher for several local school districts prior to her becoming a fourth-grade teacher at the Attitudes of Our Lord's School. She retired from teaching in two thousand seven. Gail's vast knowledge of La Mirada history is commendable. She was instrumental in many of H-PAC's projects, including the historical classroom presentations, the city's historical timeline. Sorry about that, technical difficulty. Knowledge of La Mirada history is commendable. She was instrumental in many of H-PAC's projects, including the historical classroom presentations, historical timeline, Nefis State Tours, and the La Mirada History Tour Guide and Landmarks Project. In addition to Gail's contributions to H-PAC, she also served as a member of the La Mirada Fiesta de Artist Committee, Friends of McNally Ranch, Friends of the Theater, and Friends of La Mirada Library. She's been involved for many, many years. And with that, it is recommended the council present Gail Pierce with a plaque and recognition of her service to the La Mirada community.
Gail, I don't know how, how you can ever be replaced. Your dedication and contribution to this community is absolutely irreplaceable. So, uh, thank you so much. No, I'm not going anywhere yet, am I? No, it's good. So, uh, why now? I mean, it's kind of, you got something else to add on?
No, I think all of my warranties are just wearing out now, and so I'm still involved with a couple of items in the city, and, and I just love the city, and I still am here fifty-eight years and going, so in La Mirada.
I do want to ask you one more question. What is a Bluebird leader?
Uh, the Bluebirds were the Brownies of Campfire Girls. This was way, I don't think it was the same. So that's why.
Learned something new too. Bluebird leader. But congratulations on behalf of the city. Just want to give you this, and also, uh, two tickets to the theater. Mr. City Manager, two tickets to the theater? Yes.
It wasn't a mistake?
No, it wasn't a mistake, no, no. So, hope to see you at the theater. Yeah, okay? Thank you. You know, I just came back from vacation, and that noise I'm hearing is almost like the, on a cruise ship, the boat scrubbing. You think it's that? Okay. I won't use that. Uh, next, we have a presentation of a Community Spotlight Award.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Spotlight Award recognizing, recognizes exceptional members of the community who, through their actions, reflect positively on themselves and the city of La Mirada. Steve Herrera is the owner of the Cyclery Bike Shop in La Mirada that opened in two thousand nine. In addition to serving the Southern California community for many years, he recently assisted families in the community who had tragically lost loved ones. On April ninth, an employee of Steve's, Adam Bullard, and his brother Matthew tragically passed away in a bicycle collision involving a vehicle while on a ride in Utah. Steve immediately opened a GoFundMe account to help raise money for the families. He helped raise more than one hundred thousand dollars for the Bullard families and continues to honor them through memorial bike rides and other events. Steve's passion and dedication to La Mirada and the cycling community is still on display as he continues to organize fundraisers for the families and finds other ways to honor them. Steve and the Cyclery Bike Shop assist with other worthy community causes as well. Steve regularly advocates for bicycle safety and hosts community rides throughout the year. And with that, it is recommended the city council present Steve Herrera with a Community Spotlight Award.
All the cheers says it all. And, uh, you know what?
I paid him.
That's what you need to do. I need to do too. You know, it says Community Spotlight Award, but I think it should actually say Community Heroes Award. You know, from my understanding, all the work that you did with the city manager, Rick, all the, all your good deeds, to me, it reminds me of the song Living with Purpose. I love the high-sho and captain. It's just an honor to be with you. Shannon, are you here? Okay, she just emailed me right away and said, "You need to do this for this guy. He's amazing." I said, "I don't know him." She said, "You need to pick him up."
I'm easy to find.
Yeah, I know, yeah. So, uh, I think the work that you've been doing is just amazing, and thank you for stepping out to help those in need. And on behalf of the city council and the city, we want to present you this award to you. It says Community Spotlight Award and Heroes Award.
So, I, I just want to say that sometimes we're put in a situation in life we didn't expect. Certainly, the families were put in a situation they didn't expect. I feel bad for those of you here who never got to know Matt and Adam Bullard, but they could have and should have been, that's how close these guys are. They, they sensed each other, felt each other, and would find themselves in the same spot with no prior plan. They were just, hey, what's up? You know, what I did was really probably what anybody would have done, right? You hear something tragically happens, and you say, "Let me know if there's something I can help." Something I can do to help. And then when there is, you do it. So, you know, what I, what I represent is how I was raised. Um, all, all that we did, we would give back in an instant to have Matt and Adam back. But not being able to do that, moving forward, um, just these guys, in their absence, have brought so many people together. Unbelievable, the amount and the number, the sheer number of people that came together to honor these guys, because they were, they were lovable guys. They were just beautiful, warm-hearted, lovable guys. And they'll, they'll always be missed, will always keep their memory alive. Uh, we say L-L-A-V and L-L-N-B, Longwood Adam Bullard, Longwood Matt Bullard. Um, you know, I, I, I'm an adopted family member, um, and it's just wonderful because they're, they're just great people to be associated with.
Shannon, come on up. Thanks for bringing this up to our attention.
This is David Bullard, Matt's wife, and Shannon Bullard, Adam's wife.
Uh, next, we have public comment. Anyone wishing to address council, please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Diane Gramajo. I am here tonight to voice my disappointment in the way our District Two council member, Andrew Sarega, has been treated. Andrew Sarega has been skipped numerous times by the city to serve as mayor pro tem, which would allow him to become mayor. It is unfair. Historically, in La Mirada, the mayor position has been a rotation basis amongst the elected city council members. If elected after the certification Friday, it would be unethical and unjust to, for Andrew and to the residents who have elected him, not to allow Andrew to become mayor pro tem and eventually mayor. Our community, and now specifically District Two, would have reelected him to the city council despite all the attacks and untruths told about him. Andrew has shown great commitment to our city. His resilience is shown by his continued, continuing to run and to win elections and show up to meetings despite knowing how he will be treated. Most people would have already walked away. Thank you, Andrew, for not giving up. Andrew is a smart, caring man who deserves the right to be the mayor of La Mirada, a city he has been serving for over nine years. As I have stated in previous public comment, there is no place for bullying in our city, and especially by elected officials. Let's work together for the common good of our community, not our own personal agendas. You may or may not be friends, but you should all have mutual respect and a chance at becoming mayor. Do the right thing, set the right example, and if reelected, allow Andrew to serve as mayor pro tem so he can eventually become mayor of La Mirada. I'd again like to remind everyone, our city values are integrity, openness, teamwork, diversity, service, and unity. Let's get back to what you have been entrusted to do. Run our great city and not alienate one another. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Larry and Mary Ann Yeager. We're homeowners here for twenty-two years. We love the city, we like the future, where it's going, like what you guys are doing. We want to retire here. Thinking about the not-so-distant future, the homes here generally are pretty small. Our house is thirteen hundred square feet. We would love to add on approximately four hundred square feet to make a family room for now, but in the future, not knowing what the future holds. It's really not set up for retirement with walkers and wheelchairs and whatever. Houses are just too small. We've looked into adding on, and we were told by the city that there's a fifteen-foot setback from the back wall. That seems pretty egregious. There's plenty of homes in the area that don't honor that. Possibly there's been a code change, we don't know. We don't need, we don't need to go too terribly far back for our plan to work. Uh, if we could get a seven- or eight-foot setback, that would make our dream retirement home a possibility. Uh, hopefully, is there some kind of variance or something that you can look into that might be able to help us out in that? We really want to stay here, we want to retire here, and, uh, that would go a long way to make our life a lot easier in the older years. So, thank you for listening.
Mr. City Manager, would you want to say a few words or just speak with them afterwards?
We could have, I'm sure they've spoken with community development staff, which is how they have the information that they spoke about this evening, but certainly our community development staff, um, or I would be happy to talk with them after the meeting just to kind of, um, review their concerns and see if potentially there's an opportunity to meet somewhere where, where they're happy with, you know, uh, the city's decision and we can potentially help them out.
Excellent.
Yeah, we want to retire here.
We really want to.
We want to.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
City Council, uh, Jack Medanda, thirty-year-plus resident of our community. I come as a resident, District Two. Uh, we have a very tight race for our council. Uh, I am not speaking as a, uh, public representative of, uh, the candidate, uh, that I voted for, Andrew Sarega. Uh, very tight race. Chris Flanser has run an admirable, uh, campaign. Uh, has to be, uh, very, uh, nerve-wracking, uh, how tight this is. I, I'm, uh, I appreciate Diane's words. I am not, by the way, Diane Gramajo lives in, uh, District One, and I am not her campaign manager. Uh, we are friends. Uh, I would like, I have asked each council, uh, to meet. I didn't want to, uh, Captain, sorry, you have to hear some, uh, uh, public laundry being aired. Uh, Steve Herrera, you're, you are a hero. Uh, Third Step Ministry, your, uh, cyclery. Uh, I asked each one of you to meet. I prefer this to be offline. If this is how we're gonna comment, thank you, Dr. DeRusse, for meeting, uh, with me. This is what I like. City manager, uh, city attorney, maybe you can help me understand. Can we get a public statement? Can the District Two get a public statement as to why this candidate, if the, if the vote holds, why he continues to get skipped over as a mayor pro tem? We'd like a public comment. Now, if it's about his, his voting record, I would dispute. I would say that from the dais, uh, it's pretty, pretty consistent, and if it's from his attendance, uh, if that's a standard, then let's hear it. Uh, he's censored, he's recalled, he's fined, whatever's happening. If we could get a public comment from that, uh, I'd appreciate it. And if it is attendance, uh, you know what? And, and some of the public, uh, attendance, uh, I'm sorry he misses the chili cook-off, uh, but, you know, he's accompanied me to go pick up turkeys for Foster Road on a regular basis. Uh, these are things that I, I consider pretty good. Uh, maybe they don't count. I don't know. But, you know, there's a housing element workshop, we had two of those. I didn't see any of my council there. I don't know if you get briefed on the side, whatever, but if we're talking, we're gonna go minutia with, uh, uh, attendance. I, I'd just like a public comment. Uh, city manager, council, mayor, uh, I, I think enough is enough. Uh, if you're going to skip, and let's not let the lamplighter fight our fight. Uh, whoever's feeding, uh, the editor, whatever he's feeding them, listen, if the allegations are true, then something needs to be presented, and I'm willing to hear it. If they're not true, then can we consider the second oldest, longest-tenured, uh, council member to be mayor pro tem? If not, can we get a public comment as to why not? Uh, each member here, except for Dr. DeRusse, came on after, uh, Andrew Sarega. And in each case, when you, when we were reorganized, Mayor Ang, you were the first one to vote for getting him skipped. Either you did that out of nivete, or there was premeditation. John Lewis, same thing. You came on, now, we're gonna, I'm gonna vote to skip him, either out of nivete or premeditation. Dr. Otero, same thing. Two years, and now you're our mayor. Well, God bless you. I ain't trying to hate. I, and the invitation still stands to put this off, uh, off record. Other than that, your La Mirada gadfly will be here asking for that simple, uh, request, a public statement as to why, if the vote stands, why, uh, council member Sarega continues to get skipped over for almost a decade now. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Dustin Dahl. Uh, I'm here also in support of Andrew getting his, uh, his shot at mayor pro tem and mayor. Um, you know, everybody has issues, and nobody's perfect in this, in this world, in this community. Uh, closest one to it's probably Jeff Boynton. Probably one of the best city managers we've ever had. Uh, but I am here in, in support of Andrew in, uh, you know, and the vote does, you know, side with Andrew at the end of the day. Um, you know, come Friday, you know, congratulations to Andrew. Congratulations to Chris, great race. David Constantine as well, if he's here. Uh, it's been awesome to watch. It's, it's been really super competitive, but his district, if he's voted in, that's what, three or four terms? Um, you know, as city council member in that, in that general vicinity, in that district, um, he should have his chance. So I'm here in support with, uh, with Jack and some of the others that are, that are here in support of Andrew getting a shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Public comment is now closed. Next, we have a consent calendar item seven-point-one through seven-point, uh, what is it? Through seven-point-ten.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, comment? Okay, um, I am going to abstain on seven-point-one, because I was not here, but I approve everything else, so. Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sarega.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Otero.
Hi.
Mayor Ang.
Nice to meet you, Steve. Nice to meet you, Shannon.
Stephen.
So sorry you guys have to hear all that, but thank you for coming. Absolutely. Next, we have public hearing, eight-point-one, resolution number twenty-two dash thirteen, adopting the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three budget. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the council is aware, at the study session meeting held last month, the staff presented the proposed, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget for council review and discussion. Uh, tonight's, uh, meeting, the public hearing will be conducted for the purpose of receiving testimony of the proposed budget. A public hearing notice was published and properly posted notifying the community of the time and location of the hearing. Our finance manager, Melissa Pascal, will be giving, uh, this evening's presentation and staff report. Melissa?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget allocates available resources to provide a safe and thriving community. This budget reflects the city's ongoing efforts to meet the needs of the public. Since this study session meeting in May, the proposed budget reflects the following changes. Changes recommended in the proposed Employee Benefits and Salary Rates Resolution for Fiscal Year Twenty-two, Twenty-three, an additional CIP project, um, the Leffingwell Road median improvements from Telegraph Road to Stamy Road and the Creek Park Camera System, and a, and it, and a additional box truck for the Community Services Department. The proposed budget for all funds, including transfers, is a hundred, a hundred and five million dollars for revenues and a hundred and eighteen million dollars for expenditures. The proposed general fund budget without transfers is projected to have an operational surplus of about five-point-seventy-six million dollars. The general fund reserves is estimated to be about fifty, fifty-point-eight-six million, including about a nine-million-dollar economic, uh, reserve for economic uncertainty. The fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three will include a direct payment of four million dollars towards the unfunded pension, pension liability. The city will have paid about eleven million dollars of the approximate fifteen-million-dollar pension liability. The budget provides city, the budget provides city programs at levels expected by the public and sets a robust schedule of capital improvements. It is recommended the city council conduct a public hearing as prescribed by law and adopt resolution number twenty-two dash thirteen approving the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. This point, the hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this item, please step forward. It's seen none. Anyone wishing to oppose this item, please step forward and speak your mind. If seen none, anyone wishing to oppose this item, please step forward and speak your mind. Okay, seeing none on both, public hearing is now closed. Staff, do you open for questions and comments? Any questions? Yes. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, we spent quite a bit of time at the study session talking about all these budget items and this budget proposal. I think staff has done a great job on this, putting it together, and we are fiscally responsible all the time, so I would move this item, item number eight point one, for approval in today's meeting.
Great. We have a motion. Any other?
I have a second.
Oh, you second? Any more discussion? No? I just want to say, thank you, staff, again. I think one thing that impresses me every year is you guys are very responsive and proactive on your approach to the budget. Proactive in the sense that you're paying down the unfunded pension liability, getting ahead of the game regardless of market conditions. So thank you for that, and I am all in support of this item. So with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sarega.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Temp Otero.
Hi.
Mayor Ang.
Hi. Next, we have items nine point one. We have second reading and adoption of ordinance number seven two three, amending drive-through facility standards in Title twenty-one, subsection twenty-one point two zero point zero five five of the La Marada Municipal Code, and subsection five point six point two of the Imperial Highway Specific Plan.
Mr.?
Is it City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the council is aware, the city's code and the Imperial Highway Specific Plan have standards for drive-through uses in our community, and staff has reviewed the standards, has proposed amendments as included in the proposed ordinance. The amendment will remove from the zoning ordinance and the Imperial Highway Specific Plan the standard that prohibits the location of drive-through aisles between the structure and public streets. The amendment will also require a three-foot-high block wall and landscape along drive-through aisles that are adjacent to a public right-of-way to reduce potential visual and noise impacts. And four-foot-high wall will be required if nearby residences have the potential of being impacted by the glare of headlights. Drive-through facilities will need to be designed to accommodate sufficient onsite queuing to prevent overflow vehicles from impacting adjacent sidewalks or streets. And finally, supplemental vehicle queuing analysis study may be required as part of future drive-through aisle proposals to ensure sufficient stacking and queuing. The proposed amendments will allow for the continued orderly development of the city without creating adverse impacts to adjacent properties, will also streamline the code by providing clear centralized information for developers seeking to construct facilities with drive-throughs. The proposed action is exempt from sequel pursuant to section fifteen zero six one B three and the guidelines thereunder. And the proposed ordinance number seven twenty-three was introduced for first reading, and the required public hearing was conducted at the previous city council meeting held on June fourteenth of this year. With that, it is recommended the council accept for second reading and adopt ordinance number seven twenty-three, amending section twenty-one twenty zero fifty-five drive-through facility standards of the La Marada Municipal Code and subsection five point six point two, drive-through businesses of the Imperial Highway Specific Plan by title only and waive further reading.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions, comments for staff?
This is a second reading. We went through this as well in detail on a study session in a prior session, so I will move this action, nine point one.
Have a question, comment?
Absolutely, yep.
The last reading we had is for staff. I know it's Imperial and Telegraph where we had a speaker last time of a developer who was going to put development there. Mentioned my concern was the residents on Wicker, and that they would be consulted, and they would have a chance to look at what the development's going to be, because that's their front yard is what, as I mentioned before, even though the Walmart, they put that sound barrier wall, but the oversight that we had on that, that I hear from people, is that the sound barrier wall there, but houses across the street are elevated, so that barrier wall does not protect them from the idling diesel trucks, which kind of, it's a noise pollution thing for them. And I know that's water on the bridge, and have an oversight. I just sincerely hope that when we do reach out to the people on Wicker Drive, and we do talk to them about this, that we take every lens into consideration, because that is their home, obviously, and that's their investment. And I just want to make sure that whatever we put there is going to be conducive and cohesive with them as well. So I know you said there's a process in that, and can you refresh my memory, what stage does that process happen, where the citizens get a chance to vote, I mean, to voice, I should say?
Okay, so at this point, what's happening is we're amending the code in order to allow for the proposed project to move forward. Once the applicant submits his plans, drawing, and specs for that proposed project, and we schedule it for public hearing, at that point, we'll notify everyone within a three-hundred-foot radius of the project what's being proposed, and their opportunity to provide comments to staff either in writing or during the public hearing.
If, I know it's unorthodox, but if I could be made aware when that does go out, just so I can be aware, so if people say a thing, I can advise them, hey, this is your chance to do your thing. I just hope the city, developer in the city does take that lens. The one I just mentioned previously, I know, is an oversight, and it's unintended consequence, and I get it, but it's a lasting effect on the community there, so just, we can move forward cautiously. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And even with the Walmart, if there's a situation where there's noise being conducted onsite that is in disturbance of the public peace, our code enforcement could potentially address that. I don't know that it was an oversight. There might, they might just be idling the trucks when they shouldn't be. So we can definitely look into that and communicate with our code enforcement folks to address it and try to bring some resolution to that if it is a problem.
Perfect. I'll reach out to those residents and get them more detailed of the timeframe, so we can get that looked at. Thank you.
Good question. Councilmember DeRusse?
Thank you, ma'am. Following up on Councilmember Otero's question, is four feet as high as we can go? Is there anything that limits us from going higher?
Apparently, yes. Supposedly, there's a, playoff of that, a three-foot height.
Right.
When we came up with the fourth, we actually went out and measured some of the vehicles in the fire block and see what would be adequate to try and protect the homes from any potential headlight glare. And four foot seems to be a reasonable height. They can also provide additional training with landscaping materials. If you use a four foot, if that's something that would be, of course, four foot on the solid wall seems to be.
But there's nothing that would prohibit us, if all those residents came in and they said they don't feel that's adequate, could we go five feet? I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying, can we go higher if need be?
We could certainly request them in the applicant, and they would.
Okay, there's no county or state.
But our code is four foot, so that's.
Right, okay. I understand that.
Be able to hold it to a potential, I had like glare impact.
Right. So make sure I have your justice. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just might have a follow-up question. A follow-up question to that, this is just the ordinance, this is not the development agreement. You can always go in front of planning and have a development agreement and request certain things to mitigate that, right?
Correct. The item was before you, just the ordinance, if during the public hearing process, the many questions, people would just need to increase that four-foot height to four and a half, five foot, just based on the low, the grade, and the different property, that's certainly something that could be, uh, included in the condition of approval for the project or the actual project.
Then we can, at that point, request additional landscaping above the four-foot fence for additional mitigation, correct? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
We have a motion, we didn't have a second.
Yeah, I had a motion.
We have a motion.
Yeah, there was a second.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sarega.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Temp Otero.
Hi.
Mayor Ang.
Hi. Next, we have nine point two, resolution number twenty-two dash fourteen, establishing the appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melissa Pascal will be giving the staff report on this item.
You again, Mr. City Manager. Before you is the appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. The inflation factor used is either the California per capita personal income or the percentage change in the local assessment role from the preceding year due to the addition of local non-residential new construction in the city. The population growth factor used is either the city's or the county's population growth. For fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three, the local assessment role of new residential new construction was five point six four percent. The California personal income percentage for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three was seven point fifty-five percent. The California personal income was the inflation factor selected. The population factor for the county and the city was negative point seventy-one percent and negative point seventy-seven percent, respectively. The county's population growth of negative point seventy-one percent was selected. The fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three appropriation limit is a hundred and sixty-four point eighty-five million dollars, with only thirty-six point twenty-eight million dollars subject to the limit. The city's total revenue is sixty-eight point three million dollars excluding the transfers, but only thirty-six point twenty-eight million is supported by tax proceeds subject to the limit. It is recommended the city council select the percentage change in the California per capita personal income as the inflation factor for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three, select the growth of the county as a population factor for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three, and adopt resolution number twenty-two dash fourteen establishing an appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three pursuant to the California Constitution. That concludes my report.
Thank you for, thank you, Melissa. Any questions? Yes.
I don't think we're in any danger of spending more than a hundred and sixty-four million dollars, unless we get that gold-plated fountain out there. I will move this action.
Check. Okay. First and a second. No more questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sarega.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Temp Otero.
Hi.
Mayor Ang.
Hi. Next, we have resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen regarding employment benefits and salary rates for all classes of employment, and superseding resolution number twenty-one dash twenty. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Christina Coda, our human resources manager, will be giving the staff report on the next two items, so with that, I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening, Mayor Ang and members of the city council. Each year, the city undertakes a review of employees' salaries, benefits, and other employment-related items. This process includes an employee committee consisting of full-time and part-time employees that meets to develop proposals that are submitted to the city manager for review. The city manager evaluates these proposals and submits recommendations to the city council for discussion in closed session. Upon city council approval, modifications to salary and benefits may be implemented in the new fiscal year. So resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen incorporates the following changes for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. An eight percent cost of living adjustment, COLA, salary increase will be granted to all full-time and part-time positions. The annual consumer price index for the Los Angeles area is eight percent higher than a year ago. In addition, a compensation survey was conducted earlier this year, and the results showed that salaries for most positions were below the median of survey cities. The salary adjustment will help the city recruit and retain talented staff. The cost of the COLA is approximately one point two million dollars. Number two, reduce the city's payment of the employee's CalPERS member contribution from four percent to three percent for full-time employees hired before July first, twenty-seventeen, who were considered classic members of CalPERS. The employee's payment of the member contribution will increase from three percent to four percent. A separate resolution will be processed for this change. The budget savings is approximately forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars per year. Add a full-time public safety supervisor position at salary range seventy-five. This position will supervise full-time and part-time staff assigned to the community, sheriff's station dispatch, and front desk operations and field units. The cost is approximately a hundred and six thousand nine hundred per year, including salary and benefits. Increase the salary of the safety education officer position from salary range fifty-eight to sixty-three. This is a key position that coordinates the safety education programs for the city and serves as a public relations position interacting with businesses, professional organizations, and service clubs. The cost of the salary increase is approximately six thousand three hundred dollars per year. Increase the salary of the account technician three position from salary range fifty-two to fifty-eight. Two positions perform the city's payroll functions and the accounts payable and accounts receivable functions. The cost of the salary increase is approximately thirteen thousand per year. Add an auto allowance of three hundred and fifty thousand per month for the assistant city manager, deputy city manager, and department director positions. These positions currently do not receive an auto allowance. The cost is approximately twenty-one thousand dollars per year. Allow up to five hourly part-time stagehands to earn overtime over eight hours of work in a day during the technical week rehearsals for Broadway-style theater productions, not to exceed five days per production. The city's stagehands are working side by side with the employees of the production company who earn overtime after eight hours. Allowing overtime after eight hours will help the city to remain competitive. The cost is approximately eight thousand one hundred and sixty dollars per year. Increase the accrual rate for personal time off, PTO, that hourly part-time employees may earn from one PTO hour for thirty hours worked to one PTO hour for twenty-five hours worked. PTO can be used for sick leave, vacation, and holiday time off. The increased cost is approximately nineteen thousand per year. Increase the maximum hours of personal time off that hourly part-time employees can accrue from sixty to eighty hours. There is no budget impact regarding this change. It is recommended the city council adopt resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen regarding employment benefits and salary rates for all classes of employment, and superseding resolution number twenty-one dash twenty. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Coda. I appreciate that. Any comments? Questions? Councilmember DeRusse?
Thank you, ma'am. Just a couple of comments. Council went over this quite extensively with City Manager, and I think all of these are certainly warranted. And when I came on to council many years ago, we were coming out of the Great Recession, we weren't able to give any COLAs, we weren't able to give any raises. Staff was doing two and three different jobs as different people were retiring and stuff, and we downsized, and staff stood up and did an excellent job, kept the city going. We're beneficiaries, all the good things that you heard in our budget, we're beneficiaries of all that work years ago and putting us in the right position, and the work that Jeff and Anne have done currently, and then coming out of COVID, all the adjustments we had to make with COVID and all these things, and you see where we're at. So I find this is warranted, and I'm very happy to move staff's action.
Second.
Second? No other comment? Yep, absolutely.
To echo what Councilman DeRusse said, when we first came upon this, when I saw the, let it fold, you know, when I saw the eight percent, my mouth kind of dropped, because coming from a union that we forewent our measly two percent raise, and we still haven't gotten it, and we're still being jerked around by the great city over yonder who's still doing that to us. But looking to see that, I think the eight percent is amazing. But you look at what the total overall cost of the city of that eight percent is a drop in a bucket for what we get in return. And I think it's well warranted, well earned, and I have no qualms whatsoever when people approach me and say, you authorized an eight percent? Absolutely, I did, and I will not back down from that, because our people worked their behinds off, behind the scenes, to make this place not only float but excel, excel very well. And I'm just, I think everything is very reasonable, especially for being the, that was put before us, everything is reasonable, it was, actually, we're still under in some, compared to some other cities, and people still stay because of the environment we have. And this is your last budget cycle, correct? Okay. Giving three hundred and fifty thousand dollar car allowance, that's pretty awesome.
I'm not getting that.
But no, slip of the tongue, totally, someone was caught. It was pretty amazing, but congratulations to the employees, well deserved, well earned. And I'll spend it all in one place, because it ain't going for nowadays, so that's all I have.
Great. Thank you for that, Mayor Pro Temp. Any other questions, comments? No? I just want to say, we've been talking about how great you guys are for years, months, and weeks, and years, but we finally get a chance to show you how great you guys are. So congratulations, I'm also in support of this item. Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sarega.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Temp Otero.
Hi.
Mayor Ang.
Hi.
We're probably throwing some free tickets for BT to the theater, too.
Finally, we have nine point four, resolution number twenty-two dash sixteen, regarding pain and reporting the value of employer-paid member contributions to the California public employees retirement system. Mr. City Manager, or is it Christina?
Okay. This item was previously mentioned in the prior presentation. The city has made efforts to reduce pension costs, including reducing the amount the city pays of the employer-paid member contribution, known as EPMC, for employees who are classic members of CalPERS. Effective June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, the city's payment of the employee's seven percent CalPERS contribution was reduced to four percent, and the employee's payment was increased to three percent for full-time employees who are CalPERS classic members and were hired before July one, twenty-seventeen. Full-time employees hired on or after July one, twenty-seventeen, who are CalPERS classic members, pay the full seven percent member contribution. Full-time employees who are CalPERS new members under the Pension Reform Act pay six and three-quarter percent as a member contribution, which is about one-half of the CalPERS normal cost. Staff proposes to reduce the city's payment of the employee's CalPERS member contribution
Staff proposes to reduce the city's payment of the employee's CalPERS member contribution to three percent and increase the employee's contribution to four percent for full-time employees who were hired before July one, twenty seventeen, and are considered CalPERS classic members. The city will pay three percent and report the value of the employer-paid member contribution to CalPERS as additional compensation. The reduction in the city's contribution will reduce retirement costs by approximately forty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars per year. In accordance with Government Code, section two zero six nine one, the city council has the authority to increase, reduce, or eliminate the payment made by the city of the normal contributions required to be paid by classic members. CalPERS requires the contract agencies use a resolution template provided by CalPERS with minimal modifications by agencies. The attached resolution will become effective June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, which is the start of the first pay period of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. It is recommended the city council adopt resolution number twenty-two dash sixteen regarding paying and reporting the value of employer-paid member contributions to the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Thank you, Ms. Cota, for that detailed report. Any questions or comments? Hearing that, do I have a motion?
Move item nine point four.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRusse.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Srega.
Hi.
Mayor Portemotero.
Hi.
Mayor Eng.
Hi. Next, we have city council public comment, I mean, city council reports and announcements. We'll start with Councilman DeRusse.
Thank you, Mayor Eng. Happy to report the I-5 freeway is ninety-five percent complete, or ninety percent complete, so you're going to see lanes opening up, a lot of things happening, and hopefully, within two months or so, all of the bridges will, everything will be open, and everything will be good on our side of town, so we're not expecting any delays there. And looking forward to July third event coming up. I know we're going to probably have a lot of people in the park, and so it's going to be good. I just encourage everybody to go out and support our nonprofits with their different activities out there and their fireworks booths because that raises money for their events, and all that money goes back into the city, so hopefully, you support all of those. And I just want to give a shout-out to Mayor Eng. He was on the radio today doing a report on some things that he's doing, and he did an outstanding job, not only representing himself, but representing the city as mayor, and so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I've been to the past two concerts in the park, Oliver, you're doing a great job. Everybody was dancing at the last two, so got a nice big dance floor out there in the front, so picked some good bands, so my hat's off to you on that. And we have the July third celebration coming up, and I hear we have two hundred and fifty extra shells this year, is that right? That's what, about another ten minutes?
All for sale.
Twenty minutes?
Yeah.
Something like that. Well, it's going to be a great show, it always is, and it's glad that we have it, and again, following up on Councilmember DeRusse, we have Rotary, Kiwanis, and other different charity groups here that are selling food, so make sure you visit them and spend your money often, early and often. And with regard to follow-up on the northbound I-5 off-ramp was just opened today. They just closed the one off of Firestone, and now you can get off at Valley View, so that just happened about five hours ago, so that is my report.
Thank you, Councilman Srega.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
No report. Mayor Portem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Johnson wants to welcome you in official capacity here. I know watering your lawn is different than putting a uniform on and leaving the front door and going to work. I know that commute's going to be horrible for you. I can only imagine how horrible it's going to be for you going down Imperial Highway. It can be crazy when you get by Panera, I guess a little jammed up right there, so welcome, and from one CO to another, I know you're, I know what you, crime's easy, it's the personnel issues you have to worry about that really gets you, so we know what that's all about, so welcome again. I just want to comment on the budget increases that we had in our budget, we did increase our public safety, and there's been some critique, and I've heard it personally, people whispering in my ears that, well, we're so safe, why are we spending more? You spend more because when you got it on the run, when you got it, you do, you need to ensure the safety of our people, plain and simple, and I have no qualms of championing that in the same way that we ordered up a second motor officer from the first motor officer we got, so next motor school you guys get, make sure to flag a few to come on over here and get to work, we'd appreciate that. Also, the one new black and white, I think, is going to be on watch three, with my morning watch, which will be extra, extra to help out, keep our community safe. Also, it's enlightening to see the Creek Park camera system coming to fruition. It's going to be something we're going to start in Creek Park and hopefully get in all of our parks to make sure that our families are safe and secure, and at least it'll help out, another tool we can have to help our public, our public safety to keep our families safe. I believe LPRs are going to be on the horizon, hopefully to button that up and make it a complete system, which can help not only for investigation but prevention, and let it be known that it's not welcome here in La Marada. You commit it, that's fine, but we're going to catch you, and our men and women will do what they got to do to ensure that you're in handcuffs, you're behind bars, and what happens at that point happens, but there's a vote coming up about that, I understand, someone told me about that. I have the pleasure and honor of going to see Chief O be sworn in this Thursday for the, like, international, he's the president of the International Association of Campus Safety Chiefs, of Campus Safety, and so this will be something that will put La Marada, not only nationally but internationally, so I'll be flying out there doing a turnaround trip, all on my own dime, just full, 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 taking the day off work and everything to go be there to support Chief O, I think that's important for that. And also, I forgot to mention, we all received a packet where, our invite, I should say, from Downey City Council a few weeks ago, and this is, they had a Corazon de Mexico that showed up there from, all the way from Guadalajara, and they showed up there and they, and they performed, and it was a magnificent show, a great show. We were invited, and Downey really took care of myself, and my wife attended, it was amazing, so I know we have shows of that nature, and if we crank it up a bit and have a little more mariachi in La Marada, I wouldn't be disappointed, that's all I got to say. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Maybe we can bring him on for this chilly holiday?
We'll get him, we'll see how Downey did it. It'll be a hell of a fit for a party, though.
Yeah. Great, BT, what's going on at the theater?
Well, we finished our run of In the Heights on Sunday, great success, and that ended our season for the year, our theatrical season, with some extra good news. As you know, most theaters in the United States are suffering at levels close to fifty percent of, you know, attendance and revenues relative to the pre-pandemic years, and somehow, La Marada Theater ended up breaking its previous records for attendance and revenue in this past season, and for that, I want to acknowledge the support of the council and staff, and of course, everybody who works at La Marada Theater, and our partners and vendors.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it was a great season, fire, that was really good. I just want to say, congratulations to Chris again, and I was on the interview panel, I just want to repeat myself one more time, you were that good. Honestly, you were just, your knowledge and your passion and just experience just outshined everybody, and we're just so glad to have you, and I know you're going to be a lot, you're not, you're going to be very visible, I can see it already. I mean, you've been here, what, less than two weeks, and I've seen you three times.
Six times?
So, I know you're going to be around a lot, so it's great to have someone who lives in La Marada, patrolling La Marada on and off duty, so welcome again, hope to see you around a lot more. So with that, I just want to say, I just got back from Iceland, it's three o'clock over there now, and I am supposed to be sleeping, but for some reason, I haven't slept for forty-eight hours, going on seventy-two, so I'm still pretty energetic, but I'm sure I'm going to crash tonight, so with that, that's my report. City attorney announcement, Craig?
No announcements.
No? Mr. City Manager?
Just a couple of items, wanted just to say thank you for your trust and support of all the staff, all the kind comments during the salary benefits resolution item, and